All right, so calling to order the Swamp Scott School Committee Regular Session Meeting Agenda, dated Wednesday, June 24th, 7:00 PM. Virtual meeting is in accordance with the executive order issued by Governor Baker on March 12th, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 304, Section 20. So if you are able to, please stand and for the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't have a flag, but.
Wait, hold on, I can share my screen.
There you go.
Um, maybe. Hold on one second. You got it?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States.
Of America.
And to the Republic. For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on, I can share my screen.
There you go.
Um, maybe. All right, so, um. Hold on one second. All right.
Pledge allegiance.
We're playing back.
Yeah.
Why are we playing back?
I don't know.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's interesting.
Well, Ted made the name. Hi Ted.
Hi Ted.
Hi Doyle.
All right, so I think we're gonna, uh, move over to public comment. So for public comment questions, um, you can email right at swampscott@clay12.ma.us or text her at 617815075. So why don't we, what we typically do is go over to community announcements while we wait to see if there's any public comment coming in unless there is already that I don't know about. Anybody know?
No, nothing yet, Gargi.
Okay, so why don't we do community announcements and then we'll circle back? So anybody have anything they want to say? Or do we have any students with us or no? I can't see them.
No, I don't see them either.
Gregor Max, you there?
No, they're out of school.
I usually pick on Max, don't I? All right, I'm picking on anyone else. Anyone else have public comment that they, I mean, sorry, committee comment, community announcements that they have, they want to say anything?
Um, I want to give a shout out. Can I go, Gargi?
Yeah, sure.
I would, I want to give a shout out to the town moderator and the people who organized, uh, the town meeting because it ran so much better than I expected and I was sort of in on a little bit of training of people and I was getting nervous and it was pretty awesome. So that was a really, really big job and I think it went really well, so I just wanted to officially say thank you. That's it, really.
Aaron, do you have anything you want to say?
Um, well, I'll echo that. Right, it did go a lot. I thought it was going to be much more, have much more snap moves than it did, but, um, so it went well and I wanted to thank you, Gargi, for reading the statement on behalf of all of us. Hopefully, um, based on people's comments, I seem to get the sense that they understood where we were coming from and, uh, and hopefully if we're back before them, they will understand and support what we were, uh, what we were asking for.
Yeah, I will say that I did, um, speak with Tim Dor, well, I texted with Tim Dorsey afterwards just to, and I thanked him for kind of conveying our message again because I think Larry Dupree and some other people had questions about it and I thought he did a well, a good job articulating it based on the statement. So I think that was good. I also have to, a big shout out to the town for managing that. That was challenging and it was, it did go off really well. It was pretty impressive. It makes you think of all the, unfortunately, due to COVID, so many things are revealing that we can now do in different ways. I think that might be one of them, the town meeting where we don't have to all sit in the room for four hours. So, um, that was great. I also wanted to just mention that, um, the video that we saw, um, that the town showed, um, from the group, um, SCAR, I think it's called, um, it's a town-led, a kind of initiative to kind of embrace diversity and inclusion. I think I was, um, I was a little surprised by it. I was, uh, surprised by the content, but also, um, I was glad to see that, you know, I think Swamp Scott is really, uh, putting this in the forefront of our community and I, I kind of welcome that, but I think it was uncomfortable, I'd say, for the district because I felt like it was, um, things were said in the video about the district that I, I, I don't think it's the district's fault. I think the district, um, is learning to, um, work on this and has been working on these issues. But I, I just wanted to put it out there that I, it was a surprise for sure, um, but I think that it, again, I think the, the content was important, um, and, um, I think, you know, I think more to come on that or we should definitely kind of, I think the town is doing that, that, um, event tonight, actually at the same time as us, correct? They're, um, I don't know the name of it, Suzanne, do you know it?
They're doing a restorative circle. It was interesting. I was logged in for like the last 45 minutes until I joined this meeting. It was, it was really interesting. It was going really well. It was crazy. I mean, great, in a good way.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, again, I just, um, that was, it was a provocative video, but I think the content was, um, was, is important to kind of see and what people's thoughts are, what these kids are saying. So, um, I wish, I hope in the future the committee can start to kind of look at including, um, different students maybe, um, for some of these meetings. I know we have our school committee reps, um, through student government, but I don't know if there's any way to kind of rotate folks in just to make sure that we're, you know, getting the pulse of the students on these issues. But, you know, obviously defer to Dennis, obviously, and Pam and your team to look into that further. And yeah, this is my last meeting. It's going to be weird not talking to everyone so often. I'm really kind of getting sad about it, but also relieved on the other hand, because it's a lot of work. So I commend you all. It's been a long run. It's been great. It's been a huge learning curve for me and, um, Pam, I really can't say enough. I think this district has grown tremendously, um, since your tenure and you have an amazing team and you just, you know, I don't even think we checked in that much this year. Like, to be honest, like I was worried about being the chair and having a lot of the time commitment, but you're just, you have it. You're doing an awesome job. So just, I'll be watching as a concerned citizen of Swamp Scott and you'll be hearing from me, I'm sure.
Well, I said to you personally, Gargi, and I want to say in front of the committee, that I really, really enjoyed working with you as chair. You know, I did confess to you that I was afraid of you when you first joined the committee, Suzanne, but, um, I really feel like you pushed me both, everybody pushes my thinking in a different way and I've really come to enjoy your honest, direct push me to think another way about issues and I've appreciated that. And I feel like even though it hasn't been like, we haven't reacted to situations and checked in, we've kept a very regular schedule and, you know, whether it was phone call or was meeting in person, it was always checking in to make sure that we were on top of things. So I really, really have enjoyed working with you as chair. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Um, anyone else for community announcements or I think that's, oh no, Ted. Ted, are you there? I didn't, I don't see you.
I am here. I have, uh, technical issues, but, um, a couple of, a couple of things. One, um, I think town meeting was, uh, run really well and hats off to everyone that was able to, um, make it without that many flaws. Uh, like Suzanne, I was, I was very nervous about the tech part of it, but, um, it was great and I think, uh, there, that is just, uh, maybe the, uh, the, the beginning of different meetings like that. One or two comments in regards to, um, the beginning of school. Um, I know that, you know, Desi and what we're going to look like, what we're not going to look like. I saw a couple of, uh, polls today and it actually was 50/50. This wasn't a poll for Swamp Scott. This was a poll statewide. Um, 50% about said that they did not want to send their parents to school. The other 50 said, uh, that they're really concerned about what it's going to look like. In saying that, I think it, I think it is in our best interest to make sure that there is information going out as, as frequent as possible during the summer. Um, and Pam and I know you would do it, but it's, it's really important because there was also, uh, a piece in the anxiety of, uh, the kids and the parents. So I know that it's there on, uh, everyone's radar. I just wanted to say that I think it's really important that we make sure that that information is facilitated to everybody. And I'll close, uh, I don't know if this is the time not, or not, but Gargi, um, I thank you. You have always had the ability to, um, look at things in a reasonable, fair perspective. I know that the past couple of months have been really crazy for you and your family. That the community realizes the, the dedication and the time it's put in by all the school committee members, but especially being the chair. There's a lot of work there, so thank you. And I know that, uh, we're in a better place with your leadership. That's it. I'm going.
Thank you, Ted. Um, all right, I think, and Amy is not on, correct? I can't, I don't know why I'm having a view issue. Is she on at all? No? Okay, so we will move over to, uh, back over to public comment. Is there any? You're muted, Suzanne. I can't hear you.
There's nothing. No texts, no emails.
No texts, no, okay. All right, so we are going to move over to the superintendent's report.
Uh, with permission of the chair, I'd like to take things out of order today and, um, do letter B before letter A. I, like, you all know Colleen Finn, who is on the call, Vice Principal of the High School. And we also have with us Julie Nasiola, who is the Health and Wellness Teacher at the high school. And really what's going on at the, for the town, um, tonight was precipitated by the work that Julie and Colleen did. And Colleen was a real help to the town in making connections and setting up tonight's, um, event that is taking place while we have our school committee meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Thank you for being here tonight to talk about our event tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. Um, this has been in the works for weeks, uh, prior to the protest of last Saturday. So ladies, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you so much. So thank you, everyone, school committee, um, and panelists for inviting us. Julie and I discussed how we're going to present tonight, so I thought I would start and then I'll turn it over to Julie. So just a little background on myself. Prior to moving into the Swamp Scott School District, I worked for schools that, um, were very urban, very diverse. And one of the ways that we handled discipline and student conflict was, was through restorative practices. So if we're not aware what a definition of restorative practices are as far as student discipline, it's a powerful approach for discipline in which you focus on repairing harm through inclusive processes that all the stakeholders that are involved in that student participate in. So that would be parents, that would be, you know, police officers, SROs, anyone in the community that has contact with that, coaches, teachers, friends. So that's basically what the type of environment that we create when we have restorative practices, um, for our students. So when I started in Swamp Scott, that's one thing we wanted to start shifting because we looked at discipline data and realized, you know, suspensions weren't changing behavior, detentions weren't changing behavior. So we had all these punitive consequences that weren't necessarily changing students' behavior. So we started slowly training staff, slowly introducing this into our, um, practices as far as discipline. And as a result of that, we were asked this year to conduct a district-wide professional development throughout the school year for interested teachers that wanted to learn the practices of restorative adjustment, adjustment in a tier one model, which with restorative adjustment, it's part of the MTSS. So you have the tier one, tier two, tier three. So there's different tiers, but tier one is just the universal. So we wanted to give every teacher that, those practices or those skills so that they could utilize that in their classroom when there's difficult conversations or handling student discipline. So out of that, um, the training that we did this, this school year, Julia Nasiola was one of our participants in that training. And for her final project, she created a restorative circle, which I can give a little bit background of what that is, as if we were in session. So if we were in session and she had those students and staff in front of her, this was what she created and it was a result of what was happening globally. Um, the issues of racism injustices, the issue with George Floyd and, and just our students needing a voice. So Julie and I in conversation after she presented that, I said, well, let's make, let's make it a go. Let's do this. Let's make sure that we, even though we're not in session, we're going to make this happen. So what we're doing tomorrow night is, is very modified as far as what a restorative circle is or utilizing restorative practices. With the group that we have tomorrow night, the majority of the participants, I believe, except two, have either participated in a restorative practice circle with us, has been trained in restorative justice and practices with us. So they have that experience coming into that. So tomorrow's going to be a little bit different because you're going to see individuals who have utilized the skills throughout the school year or have been trained throughout the school year. So that's the group we have. So we have a parent who has been in, um, restorative practices with us where he had a child that, um, wanted to repair harm with somebody. So he came in, we have community members, we have the police chief, we have the fire chief, we have teachers, Holly Flanagan, myself, um, Julia Nasiola, Melissa Albert. You can actually see the list. We have our Students of Color Coordinator, Tammy Bailey. We have two students, uh, Al Bangora and Mara. We have a Mecca parent, we have Latoya. So we wanted to make sure that we encompass it a broader circle, um, so that we're able to have this conversation to support our students and our staff. What, and we have Peter Spelius was asked to be on this as well. I'm looking through the list right now. And Julie last week was asked to present at the select board meeting because this got, you know, I think somehow this travel that we're doing this and it was, okay, thank you, school. How can we bring this in the community? So in Julie and I's conversation, we wanted to focus on the students and staff that we have right now that are trained and to present Julie's project in a live format tomorrow night. So what we did as a result is we, um, connected the town and we connected the Center of Restorative Justice, uh, which was the, the center that I was trained at about at Suffolk University, and we connected them with the town so that they could create something similar and have a voice for what was happening in the town. So for ours, a little bit different where ours is more students having that conversation, the school-based having that conversation. It's all the stakeholders that we see with these students and some of these students have been voices in those protests. I believe one of them was, was on the front page of a paper. So we wanted to make sure that we encompassed all that. So our intent is to give the students a voice, give the stakeholders that work with these students, the teachers, more of a voice. And we've also shared it out as to wider range of participants. So, you know, we have not just Swamp Scott residents, but I know that there are participants in other communities that were trained in restorative practices and they want to watch this. They want to see how we're doing this. They want to look at the questions that we're asking. So it should be a little bit, it's a little bit different. But I wanted to just make sure that Julie now, because, sorry, I talked a lot. So Julie can share what her, I keep calling it her baby because this was her creation. Um, and she went with it and we are so proud that she, uh, you know, kind of took this and is passionate about it. And this, so this, what we're doing tomorrow is her final project for us and we're making it a go. And I'm so proud to have her as a colleague and I'm so proud to have her in Swamp Scott High School because she's such an advocate for, for so many students, um, and so many students that are struggling across the board. So Julie?
Thank you. Um, so Colleen pretty much hit the nail on the head with saying that I created this basically because it's something that I'm very passionate about. So I came to the district last year as a long-term substitute and then I got hired for this year. And, you know, throughout my experience at Swamp Scott, it's been great. Um, I have nothing but love for the community. But something that I do want to say is that as an educator, I would feel like most teachers would agree that we want our students to speak up and we want them to be leaders and we want them to take control of their futures. And even as the health teacher, I had, um, so many students emailing me, telling me how distraught they were, asking to have Zoom meetings with me. You know, what can I do, Miss I, after the killing of George Floyd and, um, a lot of others, uh, for that matter. And so something that I noticed in the community, um, was this breakdown in dialogue that seems to be very public, right, with the adults. And to me, we have our students who are looking at these, you know, high figures and these adults who can't have these difficult conversations. And to me, this is when they matter most, is when they are hard to talk about and they're uncomfortable. And when they turn into, you know, issues of human rights turn into political debates, it's just a shame to me. So for my graduate education, I went to UMass Boston and a lot of my education was about restorative justice, uh, not restorative justice, racial justice. And being able to make sure that all students are heard in the classroom. So I really think it just starts with conversations like this. And even though restorative practices can be used to repair harm and per se for our school community right now, this didn't start from repairing harm. It's to make a conversation and to build community. And as Colleen said, all of us, for the most part, have had experience doing these circles and I feel like it's going to be a really great way for our students to take part. I know we have a lot of students who are going to tune in tomorrow, so it should be really good. Um, and that's kind of how this started. It is my baby. Um, I'm really passionate about it and I'm excited to see it tomorrow. I'm excited for students to be able to, to call in and we have some great students on there. So, um, it should be a really, really good circle and I'm really excited to be the moderator for it, so.
Suzanne, can you go back up to that first page, Julie? I didn't know if you want to talk about the rounds or anything, or you just want us to tune in?
So for the rounds, um, the first, you know, these rounds, the first two questions are really, really difficult questions and they're questions that adults have been debating. I've, I've, I've seen this on Facebook and things like that. So the first one, um, is about this phrase called trauma porn and what that means. So we have a very, you know, in-tuned community with being able to see these videos of murders in broad daylight and then everybody sees it. Whether you choose to or not, that's a different question. So that's one of our first questions is, did you see the video of the officer on George Floyd's neck, right? Over eight minutes on his neck. Did you watch it? And if you did, why did you choose to? If you didn't, why did you choose to not watch that? The second question is about the riots and some of the violence that happened after, you know, many of the riots, um, did not, most of the riot, the protests, I should say protests, were peaceful and some of them turned violent and it seems that those violent protests were the ones that gained so much media attention, which is a shame because I think it kind of shadows what's going on. Why was there arson? Why was there looting? That's another question. Why do you think it's happening? Um, and the third one is to kind of end on a more note of optimism is what can we do? Whether it's as a school or as a community or just in general being a citizen in this country, what can we do, um, to really help our, I say brown and black neighbors? How can we lift them up and help them when we know there's racial injustice, right? We can, we can state health statistics. I have the health background. My BU education was a lot on public health and the, the health disparities that affect African-American communities is outrageous if you saw the numbers, right? So whether we're talking about health, whether we're talking about police and, you know, putting African-Americans in jail disproportionate levels compared to whites. Anything really, traffic stops, right? We know traffic stops on people of color disproportionately stops. So I want to know what can we do as a white person, as a black person, what can we do to help people of color and make sure that stuff like this is more talked about in the future? And, you know, hopefully better outcomes, but, um, so those are the questions that all the panelists will be answering. There will be no chat on the webinar and there will be no question and answer. All questions were supposed to be asked prior to the event, which we have the Google form for. So we're able to click on that and see if anybody from the community has any questions that we can try and fit in, um, by our panelist responses. Um, and we met last week as a little practice run and seemed to be really good, so, um, that's why we're here. We want to just talk about what's going on and build community in the school because, you know, at a time like COVID, we need it most right now when everyone already feels the need to, so.
So Julie, I just kind of just want to chime into some of the rounds. So what, if you choose to chime in and watch tomorrow, you'll see, we're not going to be in person. We actually will be, uh, via Zoom, unfortunately. But one of the, the structures of a sort of practices is having that circle because a circle is not meant to be broken. A circle is meant to be continuous and a, a strength of bonding. And what you'll see when we are having these questions is that only one person is able to speak at a time. If they have their, a question, um, Julie or myself will be letting someone else respond to that person. But how it's structured is all the questions are asked in the circle, continued that way back to the reverse circle and then we have it broken up another way. So usually when you're doing a circle live, you have a talking piece and it usually has some importance to the person that's the keeper or the moderator. And you usually start with an agreement that the group decides that they want and what the purpose is and they end with that agreement as well. So you'll see that tomorrow. We start with a check-in round just to get everyone's pulse because some people might be coming into tomorrow's circle frustrated, tired, angry, sick. So we want to just know where we are and where people's headspaces are. And then Julie will start by asking the first round and everyone will have a chance to respond to that. And then we'll have a chance for some, some facilitation for people to ask questions. If, you know, Julie makes a statement that someone wants to respond to and that's how the rounds will continue to go. Then it will end with, um, a closing statement that Julie's prepared. And it's a reflective statement that we ask everyone to leave with, with just thinking about their experience and how it relates to the statement that Julie's proposing. So we'll be asking the questions that people have submitted prior to in the Google form, probably before that closing, just to make sure there's one other, um, round of just facilitation. So it's a little bit different. It's more of a modified, like very modified, I would say. But we are using some of the practices that we use in person and live. So I just wanted to make that clarification for everybody, but I hope that people are able to watch it. We are starting at 5 o'clock tomorrow. So it should be a, a pretty amazing and heartfelt, um, experience for most of us.
Ted has his hand up.
Good, Ted.
So, so I, I think this is a, a great first step. Um, one thing that I, I, I don't know if you're aware of is the school committee went to, um, to Boston for a meeting, um, with the Mecca parents. Um, and are you, are you guys aware of like the dialogue that transpired that night?
Yes, we are aware. We have a Mecca parent on our panel as well. Um, but yes, we are completely aware of that di- dialogue and one of the conversations and, um, it would, it would have been great. I, I would have loved to be part of that just because we've had conversations with the parents and we, one of the things that we've talked about is when students have come to us and brought us issues, we have addressed it and we've addressed it in a restorative way and it has not happened again. What sometimes happens is that we do have, and this is training that we're working on as administration, we do have some teachers that have said to us, I don't feel comfortable addressing those issues. I don't know how to address those issues. I don't know how to have those conversations. So that's training that we're looking on to doing. I think what was presented at that meeting, there was, um, I know there was one student in particular and I do know the incident that she was talking about, which was not reported to us. So it makes it hard for us to, to have these dialogues and address these concerns if we're not being informed. Once we're informed, we're able to, to share that out. We actually also had our school psychologist this year, based on that, um, conversation with the Mecca parents as well, decided to, we created a whole entire document that's on anti-discrimination and consequences and what that looks like. And they developed that and we're continuing that dialogue to have to be able to add that into our student handbook. So we're aware of that. So this is a first step, but this also has been something, Ted, that's been in the process for the last two years. I can say for Julie and I, we've only been at the school for two years. So it is a process. So this might seem like a first step to outsiders, but this might actually be our, like, fifth step as a school system.
No, I, I, I understand that and I know sometimes it can be a, a conversation that, um, can get a little uncomfortable for everybody and I, I welcome any discussions on it. I can tell you as a, as a committee member, um, and expressing it to the chair after, uh, I was a little bit taken back and I think that possibly every now and then, we don't realize the, the importance of the kids in the Mecca program, um, and the days that they have and the voices that, that should be heard. And I would encourage, um, some, some dialogue with, uh, Latoya. Last year I was the liaison and I, I made it a point to check in. And I'm not sure on how, um, the information, I think the information could have been expressed better to, to us, but then again, I, I think it, it, it's a give and take. It ebbs. It's not going to be fixed in three years. It's not going to be fixed in five years. I think if you looked at the Channel Five presentation they had last night and, and you talked about the disparity, whether it be healthcare, whether it be, uh, even the Congressional Medal of Honors and the Purple Hearts, uh, the, but we have to, we have to do a better job at it. But as long as you know that, uh, at that meeting, we, I, I know for myself and a couple of others, we walked away and we need to, we need to do better. And I would even take it another step, um, to welcome Latoya to, uh, school committee meetings as much as possible to make sure that there is a venue where she can express her concern.
Yeah, and that, I mean, and Latoya's been great with us. She's been a great advocate, great support. Latoya and I have so many conversations. Like I said, prior to coming to Swamp Scott, my only experience was urban settings where, you know, 95% of the school was free and reduced lunch and, um, you know, it, it was, it, it's a very, it was very eye-opening coming from that type of school system. um, you know, it, it was, it, it's a very, it was very eye-opening coming from that type of school system to this type of school system as well. So I, I open those dialogues and, and I love having those conversations with Latoya. She is so passionate and so educated and so well spoken. Um, so we have been having those conversations and we'll continue to have those. But I, I thank you for that feedback as well. Um, and we'll make sure that we continue that because it is disparaging when you hear students in our schools say such, you know, hurtful things that have happened to them. So I do understand that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I want, I was at the meeting too in Boston. I just want to say though, I think it's incredible that everybody felt, um, like there was a space to have that incredibly challenging conversation because it doesn't happen often at a school committee meeting. And I'm just so glad, I was so glad to be a part of it. As horrible as the things that you hear, it's much better to hear them and know so we can do something about them than to not have those conversations. So I was just so happy that everyone spoke up and really said what they felt in their hearts at that meeting. And that says something too about how, you know, Pam's run the district where people are free to say what is really happening despite what it can make people feel like. So it was, I thought that was great, that meeting. And thank you guys for doing this tomorrow. I'm so proud of you guys to be doing this. And I obviously, I, as, as someone who is so interested in, um, behavior from my, for my background, I do know punishment is not a teaching tool, um, at all. And so, um, restorative, um, circles will teach new behaviors and new ways to engage with each other. And so I'm so thrilled that that's the direction that you're moving in.
I just want to close out by saying, and I said this to Colleen at leadership team meeting today. You know, I sat in on the final interviews for, um, the Dean of Students position a few years back. And one of the things that, there were so many strengths in areas in which Colleen's candidacy shined, but one of them was her background in restorative justice. So when Colleen says this didn't just occur because it occurred, she came into the district with a purpose of starting to train and starting to educate us. And when she came forward with this idea of, of Julie's and this project of Julie's and took on the leadership role and I said, run with it, they really did. And, and I've said to her in private and I'll say it publicly, I'm really, really proud to call you a colleague. Um, you've become a district leader and this work just shows that, Julie, I couldn't be happier that you're, uh, co-leading this with Colleen and that you came up with this and that you're willing to put yourselves out there. So thank you both very much for your dedication to the district.
Thank you.
Pam, can I just chime in for a sec? Um, I was just wondering, do you have, Colleen, do you have a sense of like why there, like what barriers there are to reporting? Because I think the data is really important, right? And I think that was something Pam, we talked about at one of the other meetings of like, let's, let's start collecting that data and looking at it and seeing how rampant or prevalent it is. I agree with Martha that I think it's wonderful that the students, the student felt comfortable enough to speak up. I thought that was really great and I love that Pam embraced it. And I love that Millie commended our district to saying, yeah, these are really hard conversations, but you're acknowledging them. And that's like one of the biggest first steps, right? So I think further from that though, yeah, do you have a sense of like the barriers to why kids don't report? Or, or thoughts about how you're going to address that maybe?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question, Gargan. Julie, you can speak on that too just because I know you've had separate conversations with your colleagues as teachers than I probably have. Um, in conversations with teachers, it has been, well, I don't know how to or what to say. Um, you know, they might hear kids calling each other certain names, derogatory comments while they're prepping their classroom and they, they don't address it because they don't, they don't want to start a problem in their class. So they don't know, you know, if someone's going to get offended or is it going to cause the kid to escalate? So that's something we're working with as far as teachers. And Jason, you might be able to even speak on that too, as far as what you see. As far as students, we've heard conversations from students that, well, this just, you know, this happens just everywhere. This happens in our community. So why is it going to change here? So just a general statement like that we've heard. Um, so we're trying to navigate that as well. And what we started to do when this got brought up to us, uh, from the same student, I believe, that, that presented the school committee, we started pushing and saying, please report, please report. So Chris started collecting some data on that. And then what we started doing was, because then there were some conversations of, well, we reported and nothing happens, right? The old, you know, we reported, we don't ever see anything happen. We don't know what happens, what happens behind the scenes. So we started, I, I send a Monday memo every week. So every time someone reported any type of anti, you know, whether it was homophobic or race or anything, we put the actual incident that happened, we put who reported and we put what the resolve was or what the agreement was. So we started doing that every single week and then all of a sudden people stopped reporting. And Chris and I were talking about this week, like, well, I wonder what happened? Why did people stop reporting? And then some of it is, well, the staff, it's too much time to write it up or too many, you know? So we get all that information is that, well, it was just, you know, or it's not my issue to handle. It's in my classroom. It's administrative issue. So there's a bunch of different cultural things happening in there as far as school culture on how it's maybe been addressed in the past or what's done in the past. And I think people automatically assume, okay, if I report something to, say, Chris Nork and Dean of Students, then they should get suspended. So they're waiting for that punitive consequence. Um, so then we invite them to the restorative justice conversations, every sort of chats. And we have that and we've been reporting that. But, I mean, it's still a growth. I mean, that's only all I can kind of speak on is just what we've heard and why people don't feel comfortable reporting it or, you know, or even the conversations of just, you know, what to say to a kid or pulling a kid out and having it. And so I think it, it's just making people more aware and I think these conversations are going to start building on people's own self-awareness. And once we start breaking that comfortable and say, it's okay to be uncomfortable, I think we're going to see more of that. So hopefully this works, but, um, it will be a, a, a process definitely. So I know Julie and Jason, if you want to speak on that as well.
Yeah, I, I would say at the middle school level, I mean, we're trying to build that culture. I think we have built that culture with, with the staff that, you know, we have that sort of tagline, we don't do that here. They're all our kids. So if you're an eighth grade teacher and you see a fifth grader doing something, it's like, whoa, whoa, no, we don't do that here. That was, you know, people letting, I'm not talking about racial incidents, but I'm just saying, people letting too many things go a few years back because probably didn't want to write it up. Uh, and once you give them permission to just sort of say, no, you address the issue, we'll deal with that other piece of it later. That's changed, um, a lot of sort of the day-to-day sort of situations that just happen throughout the hallways. I think when it comes to the bigger issues, um, whether it's race or, or anything really, at, at the middle school level, ninety percent of the reason that kids don't say anything is they're worried about being called a snitch or the consequence, or the retaliation. And that's hard. That's really hard because what happens is it's not so much that something happens in school, but they'll get something on Snapchat or something on text or they, they, you know, they can be sneaky. So that is sort of being able to offer the kids a safe space and to protect them from the retaliation is a huge step in figuring this whole thing out, I think.
I do think that the response in the schools should be uniform. Um, but I think we also know that that's not always the case. And Ted made a comment about having difficult conversations and how they can be uncomfortable. And I think I wouldn't know personally from having conversations with teachers. I can't say, I've had a conversation, I said, why didn't you report this if you heard this? Um, I've only heard positive things, um, if I'm being genuine about teachers standing up for students or reporting instances to, um, administration. But when things make us uncomfortable, I think we're very quick to kind of just, you know, run the other way because we don't know what to say or maybe we feel like it's not our place. Um, that's something that I've heard from, um, or read about a lot for, for white people who are really uncomfortable having conversation about race relations. Like what can I say as a white person that's not going to be, you know, sound uneducated or be not so awkward or this, that, the other thing? So when things make us uncomfortable, I do think people tend to shy away from it. But in my opinion, it's the greatest learning opportunity because the only way we're going to learn is if we do something different than what we normally do that makes us uncomfortable. So I think for teachers reporting, um, hopefully with these like heightened conversations, people are more comfortable when they hear things and knowing what to do and knowing we have open arms to talk about these issues, which I think, you know, given the current state of the country, it should be in the forefront of their brains. I don't think that this is going anywhere and it, it can't go anywhere. That's the thing. It really can't. We can't let this slip by. Um, so, you know, personally, if I were to hear something, I have no problem stepping in. But I tend to be, I, I tend to have a pretty good relationship with the students just because I am newer, I'm on the younger side. They can, I can joke about like rappers that they like because I try to be cool and stuff, so. Um, but, you know, so they're, I think they're easy, they find it easy to talk to me, which is great. And then I, I in turn just am able to share that with people. But sometimes people just might not be comfortable with that, but that's just me speculating, not.
That's a great, great summary, Julie. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, see you tomorrow.
All right. Bye. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, Colleen. Julie.
So if we could go back to my superintendent's report, it's pretty substantial tonight. Um. We have not met as a school committee since the class of twenty twenty senior parade and graduation. And I just wanted to shout out to the high school team and talk about what successful events both of them were. Um, the town, it was really wonderful to see so many in the town come out and celebrate our kids during the parade and we have received lots of positive feedback about our modified graduation ceremony. And I've shared most of that with you. Um, the high school administration invited me to join them in the tailing Jeep, fall, um, which was followed by Rose Cheever. So I also wanted to shout out to the police department who was incredibly supportive. They were throughout the parade line. They were at every intersection. Um, we really couldn't have had a successful parade without them. And then the next picture just shows the modified, um, ceremony and the arches where they did like a step and repeat. They picked up their diplomas. They went on stage. Masks and gloves, received their diplomas and it was really, um, outstanding. They also received on the way out of the driveway to the greenway, a gift bag from the PTO that included the latest ed, um, issue of the educator newspaper, which the inside was a full spread of all of their senior pictures and a tribute to them. So, um, it was a really successful weekend. Of course, Mother Nature, uh, really supported us and it was a perfect New England weather, uh, weekend. I don't know, I know there were several of you, Ted, Karen and Suzanne, you were able to attend. If you wanted to comment on any of that.
Sure, I will. I, I thought it was in some ways better than a regular graduation. Um, I don't know, it had a different, it had a different feeling to it and, um, the way everything was up on the Jumbotron and you could really see and hear and, I don't know, it just had a, a, something different about it that, uh, I think we could take some of those things and incorporate them into future years. Uh, and I know, I, I am hearing from kids, they feel that way about the parade, so I have a, I suspect.
Heard that. The parade might become a tradition. Yes.
But, but yes. Um, but I, you know, I was a little worried because, you know, we had heard, you know, from people that weren't happy, but I think the majority actually gave it a chance and really enjoyed it. And they seemed to be just as, as happy and proud of their graduates as any other year. And I, I thought it was fantastic.
I don't know if Suzanne and Ted want to add anything?
Suzanne, I don't see her.
Suzanne, you're muted.
I, I just, I keep muting myself because my dog is barking. Um, the parade, I, you know, the graduation was great, but the parade was such a surprise because, you know, I heard so much mumbling, like who wants to drive with their parents or whatever. But everyone really stepped up and decorated their cars. And then I thought like the kids in town and the parents in town that didn't even have high school, high, high schoolers that were out there cheering had so much fun. It was like such a good, it was such a good moment for the whole school system, for, for everyone to be out and celebrating like the seniors. It was really, it was really kind of cool like that. And, and everything that the For Love a Swampscut did too, to sort of, you know, get the word out and have banners and signs and people decorating the football fields and, uh, the lights on, everything. It was just like such a nice community effort to celebrate and, and make the best of a, just a strange situation. So, yeah, I think it was great. I was, it was really, it was a happy weekend.
It was, it was.
I would, I would say that, uh, all in all, it was very good. I, I really liked the, uh, the Dumbo Tron and, um, scholarships, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Um, that I think was really, uh, it eased the afternoon in the sun. But, uh, one thing I think that, uh, I'd be remiss, uh, saying, I really wish Danielle Mio was there in person because she is just such a dynamic person. Um, but her, her video was really, really, uh, fantastic. And that is the way that she is every day of her life. She's got a lot of energy. And she is, uh, she's a great person and, uh, I think we're lucky to have her in town helping the kids out.
Great. So, uh, the next item is the topic of the reopening. So a few weeks ago, I told you that the commissioner was talking about releasing some fall reopening guidance the week of fifteenth. It did not happen, but we were called for a conference call with commissioner last Friday, um, who told us then that the guidance wouldn't be ready because information was changing and that we should just be patient. Um, we were also told that the governor would release information on Tuesday. When I attended the press conference, um, when it, before the press conference started, moments before it started, we were told that the information from the governor would be released on Thursday. Tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, we have another conference call with the commissioner. I am anticipating him giving us a heads up about what's going to come out. Um, one of the things that did come up last week at our call is weeks ago, we were told that there would be one prescriptive mandate for all districts. Now it seems that there may be options of hybrid models. And it seems as of last week that we may have to select. So I look forward to the phone call tomorrow. I look forward to the press conference with the governor. Um, and of course I will communicate with staff and families as information comes my way. The next item is, um, I sent out a bridge committee parent email today. Actually, I sent it to the staff, that should say staff, um, but I should send it to parents. The, if you remember, the bridge committee is the building respect, inclusivity, diversity and growth for everyone. That's what it stands for. It's a committee that came from the ECLC grant and our cultural competency priority. Um, it's chaired by Hadley Principal Alana Bevcheck and our English language learner teacher and district coordinator, Nell Donato. Um, and what they did is they partnered this year with CCE, which is the Center for Collaborative Education, uh, to advance the work of the bridge committee and to really increase their momentum and work on the cultural response of transformation in the district. So we've kind of been addressing issues like this in a variety of ways. And part of their work with the CCE was to develop a survey and design a survey focused in the following areas. They wanted to focus on staff recruitment and retention, accountability and policy, values, belief and assumptions, community connection, curriculum and professional development. And so if you click on that link, these were, this was a summary of the results. The results of the survey were really probably eight pages. But, um, I won't read through this with you right now, but I did want to put it here for the committee to go and read on their own the result. And the survey was done of the staff. So it's really interesting, the results that came out here. And I just wanted to attach that link so you could read it, um, at your leisure.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Like I just see the very first one, you know, staff expressed a need to diversify staff across the district. I mean, are, are, are some of these things, how soon are they going to be action items or are they going to be?
The survey results talked about, um, the plan several years out. Um, part of, part of the issue, uh, that I talked about that, we've been trying to diversify our staff for years. Part of the issue and, and it ties into what's going on with the town tonight is that, um, we don't get candidates here. And why don't we get candidate, a diverse pool of candidates for our positions here? I think it's an underlying issue with what's going on in the community or whether or not they feel accepted in the community and whether or not, you know, so the issue of, I actually spoke to Peter about this, that the community and school districts are so closely related. If our, our community doesn't seem to have or isn't perceived as a welcoming community, we're not going to attract a diverse pool of candidates. Therefore, we don't have an opportunity to hire them. The other piece to that is that since we have an HR director, Julie Delillo, she's gone out and done some work, job recruitments or job fairs. And she is reaching out to attract a more diverse population and pool of candidates. So this is a long-term vision, but this gives us, now there has to be a place where we talk about what are the action items? When is this going to occur? What does the timeline look like? But this is work that is led by those two member, uh, chairs of that committee under the guidance of Jean, um, Bacon, who was unable to be here tonight.
That's awesome.
Um. Next item on my, um, is the DESC or the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Innovation Pathway Planning Grant. We have a couple of grants going on right now that I wanted to make the committee aware of. First, um, we talked a lot pre-pandemic about the Student Opportunity Act or the SOA and the plan that was due on April first. With the pandemic, the submission of With the pandemic, the submission of SOA plan was put on hold by the state. However, our district did submit our plan by the April first deadline. But last week we were notified that the deadline for submission, so they're bringing it up again. Um, the deadline for submission has been moved to August eighteenth. However, our plan went in by the April first deadline and we made three commitments in our plan. And the first was support ed, to support educators to implement high quality aligned curriculum. And the focus being on math K to ten, especially K to four, where we've seen the results of the standardized testing. And we know that we need to change what we're doing at that level. Um, the plan can be read in its entirety. I just provide highlights in order to tie it into this grant that we have applied for. The second commitment was to enhance inclusion or co-teaching for students with disabilities and English learners. To focus on grades five through twelve for gra, uh, for the year twenty twenty one. And our third commitment, and we've talked a lot about this, is to expand opportunities for career in technical education. And we had two methods in which we were going to choose to do these. And one was to implement the after dark um document that was put out by DESI or an innovation pathway program at the high school. And that ties into this innova, innovation pathway planning grant. So we will be notified whether or not we receive this grant by July and it's about twenty-five thousand dollars. And what this is, it's a structure within Massachusetts high schools that are designed to connect students to broadly designed industry sector that is in demand in our regional and state economy. Schools leverage strong partnerships with employers to provide students career awareness and work-based learning activities. So participation in any kind of pathway like this can lead students to opportunities for meaningful careers in an industry sector upon completion of the needed post-secondary education and training. So it's not bringing a career in technical education program into our school yet because I don't think we're there. But this is another way for us to pursue, pursue connecting students with um different pathways for their careers. There's five guiding principles to the grant um that I included here, just so you could, you would know what they are. One was equitable access, guided academic pathways, enhanced student support, connections to career and effective partnerships. I'm going to shout out early on, and it's later in this little blurb, to Dr. Bacon, Mrs. Oda Barnum and Mr. Kohut for working on this. They selected um, the pathway of advanced manufacturing. That selection of advanced manufacturing is only the first of what they hope to create as a variety of pathways at the high school. The reason that was selected is because if you click on this link, the Northeast Labor Market Blueprint, that was one of the areas that was highlighted. It's a forty-page document, but it was outlined in our region as a need for workforce development. And so if you go further down, it has some priorities. And one of those was advanced manufacturing. I forget what page it's on, but that's where they got their data to select, make that selection. Um, in making that selection, um, it touches on, it hits our goal of um, hitting that pos, population of students that we're trying to serve better. Um, and make sure that there's careers available. And the careers that are outlined in that Northeast Labor Blueprint are, Market Blueprint are like carpenters, electricians, inspectors, wears, machinists, there's a variety of them. But the grant is, the grant deadline for this is tomorrow. However, we submitted it earlier in the week. And as I said, about mid-July, we should know whether or not we get it. It is a planning grant because it would be implemented in the school year twenty twenty one. But that was in line with our commitment in um, our state, our student opportunity plan. And so that has all continued despite the pandemic. And I thought it was important for the committee to know that. The other grant that we are in the process of applying for um, is called the Summer on Vacation Learning Program Grant. It, they sent us something last week that you could submit an intent to apply for the grant. And that submission of the intent to apply didn't, you know, didn't hold us to our commitment, but it got our name in there and that was due on June eighteenth. Coincidentally, the next day, on June nineteenth, the grant was posted. Um, we've been notified that there have been hundreds of districts that have shown an interest in this grant. But the schools that did submit an intent to apply will be considered first. And we are one of those districts. It's a federally funded competitive grant that allows you three different choices. One, to develop and implement a summer program. Um, whether it's in person or a combination remote in person for summer twenty twenty. Another, you could do school vacations during the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And the third would be to develop and implement a weekend learning program to take place during the school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. That is what we're submitting for. When we talked about those essential standards and finding out who was engaged and not engaged and who was making progress and who wasn't making progress during the mo, remote learning. Those are the kids that we're tracking and those are the kids that we would be reaching out to if we get this grant um, to develop a weekend learning program. Whereas right now, we're thinking Saturday mornings. Um, but that would be a way to fill the gaps of what might have taken place or not taken place during our remote learning. Um, the grant is due July second. I'm not sure of the date when we would be notified, which is why I think to go for a summer program, number one, I don't think we're ready to figure out whether we're bringing kids in and doing a remote. I think everybody needs a break from remote. But to do a weekend Saturday morning kind of program is something that we're, we're looking to submit for and would be um, very excited by. And finally, I sent a communication to all families today um, about our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one one-to-one tech program in grades two through twelve. I've had a lot of, lot of positive emails about what great news it is. Um, Latanya has presented numerous times. We've gone for funds through the CARES Act. And the rationale for why a one-to-one device is important and the fact that we're kicking that off this year. Um, and as I said, I've received numerous response, very simple responses, like thank you, this is great news, looking forward to this. So a shout out to our tech department, um, a shout out to Martha Cyber for all her work and the CARES Act submission. But we're excited to be one-to-one grades two through twelve for next year. I think some parents didn't believe it because they said, wait, what? Not just the kids that need it? So um, a lot of exciting things happening and um, that concludes my report.
All right, so.
I have one other item. If you want to click on the summer facilities project list, this is not a complete. And it's just um, in the future, our director of facilities, um, Max Casper will be presenting this. What we discovered today, when I clicked on this, is that there are two spreadsheets going. Um, this is one of them. Tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with Max Casper and Garrett Baker to combine the two lists and then prioritize the projects for the summer. Um, one of the things that sticks out that's not on this one, but is on my other one, is we've talked about, a lot about at leadership team about the bathroom faucets that you have to hold on to, you have to hold open to make them stay on. And we're looking at having somebody come in and do that. The major projects um need to be combined with these other projects that are going on at each of the building levels. So I'll leave this list for you. But in the meantime, when we combine them tomorrow and prioritize them, I will be sharing them with you again as a committee. Um, some of this is standard, the cleaning, the stripping, the of the floors and all of that stuff. But um, I really feel like this is an incomplete list. And I know later in our, on our agenda, Martha Cyber is going to be presenting about the Clark Boiler Project, which is really one of the biggest projects that's taking place that we're trying to manage. So that does conclude my report.
Hey Pam?
Yes.
Are there COVID-related things happening this summer? I mean, like, I just mentioned the faucets, but are we thinking about installing like sinks or or temporary things, places like?
No, that came up today at our leadership team meeting and I'll tell you why. If we are back in person in any capacity, I do not anticipate us using the cafeteria. I anticipate having lunch in the classrooms. And we were even talking so much today about not hot lunches, but maybe bag lunches similar to the summer program that occurred. And what we are doing currently is we are, I won't use the word hoarding, but we are gathering as much hand sanitizer as we can. Every time there's um, there's an inventory, we are taking them because I do anticipate there'll be two and three hand sanitizer bottles in each classroom. But to set up a mobile sink outside the, the cafeteria when we're not going to be using it for lunches, um, doesn't seem like um, a pretty good use of funds.
I wasn't even thinking cafeteria. I was just thinking a, anywhere, everywhere.
I think, I think there'll be much more um, standard protocols in place for how often the kids are all doing their hands.
But I'm thinking of a school like Hadley where you either go to the basement of the third floor to get to a bathroom. And so I was just thinking, you know, just time-wise, if you're going to be washing your hands at the top of every hour or, or something, just, I was just.
Also, I will say to you, on top of the remote learning guidance or the fall reopening guidance, the uh, the state is putting out health guidance as well. And so to start purchasing anything other than masks and hand sanitizers um, and things at this point, I I'd want to give it another week.
Yeah, so I was curious. So you just keep thinking about how other, other schools across the world are reopening and what they're doing. I just, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you something. I, I went to an ass salon the other day. I told my leadership team this today. And what struck me as I left is they really took the time to calculate what every step that every client took walking into that building and making a modification. And so my directive to the principals today was you need to start your day outside of that school and walk through a day of what your students do and talk about and write down where we think we need to make modifications and where there are challenges. And so each and every one of our principals has been tasked with that. You start your day, you walk through a day of a student and where are we going to have challenges and how are we going to fix them and how are we going to face them? So that's what I tasked them with today. You really do need to walk through an entire day. If the art class teacher's coming in, if the music teacher's coming, when do those protocols and those, those hand sanitizing occur? Do they occur every hour? And then as we get the state guidance as well, we'll be able to incorporate that. But you really do need to do an entire day and figure out where our challenges will be. And how often the cleaning's taking place and now the railing's being done and others, the doorknob's being done. So that's where we're at as of today.
Great. Yeah, there is, um, Pam, just, I mean, I think you guys might have heard this, like, we had, um, there's a organization called Beyond Walls. They do all those beautiful murals in Lynn and they actually um, built us a hand washing, washing station. Um, they have like a, a blueprint of it and we have it right outside the center. Um, but I think like, yeah, hand washing stations are an interesting concept. Just look and see what you need. But I mean, that's great that you guys are doing like a walkthrough that way, a day in the life of a student to figure it out. So that's, that's good news. Um, so I think Martha's next, right, for school business administrator?
Yes. Thank you. I have the uh, I have a, an article for your consideration. Well, you need to, to vote on this one. So um, so the Clark Boiler Replacement Project, we have been moving forward with this. Um, we did push back the timeline on it. Um, so that it aligned more closely with town meeting and the voted town meeting for capital projects. So I am happy to report that um, that the Article Nine um, was approved at town meeting on Monday night. And funding was requested at five hundred and fifteen thousand for this project. And um, the, the funding of five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was for the boiler replacement and a generator replacement. So we have not started um, the process to go out to bid for the generator. We're going to get the boiler in place first. Um, the procurement was done in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter one forty-nine, Section forty-four A through forty-four I, um, and also includes some provisions from Chapter thirty. Um, there was sub-bids for electrical services because they were more, estimated to be more than twenty thousand dollars. The electrical subcontractor payment at twenty-eight thousand. Um, and it's baked into the prices that the vendors submitted. So we're happy to, um, this project came in under, under where we had forecasted it. Um, BLW Engineering estimated the project to come in at about four hundred and one thousand dollars. And the low bid came in at three hundred and seventy-four thousand. Um, so we were very, very pleased with the bid results. Um, we're also very pleased with the vendor. Um, the vendor is well-known. They're uh, out of Salem, Mass. Um, they've worked on a number of projects with BLW. And they had very favorable ref, favorable references from Den, uh, Dedham, City of Salem and Town of Wellesley. So I don't know if the committee has any questions for me uh, regarding uh, the bidding contract or the award request, but I'll be happy to, to take those, field those questions now.
So, so the good news is that the bid was low, so it's going to be easy. So the, the generator replacement will still come in under five fifteen?
Uh, I, the generator, we estimated the carrying cost of the generator to be about a hundred thousand dollars. So um, if we're spot on with that estimate, then yes, the overall project will come in under budget. But if we were a little bit off on the generator, we've got a little, we've got a little bit of wiggle room.
Excellent. Are the boilers going to be the same type of boilers that are in um, that got replaced into Hadley?
Um, no, I do not believe so. I, I'm not a boiler expert. Um, BLW, BLW wrote the specs for it, for what we were looking for. Uh, Clark is a smaller school, so I don't anticipate it being the same size and capacity. Um, the, the timeline, and I, I didn't speak about in the memo, the timeline for award and substantial completion um, should be done by the end of August. So there should only be a small punch list of things left come September, which uh, aligns nicely with the start of school.
I was, I was only asking because I think we, we spend so much time making sure the Hadley boilers could maybe be used in the middle school. And I just was thinking, you know, if you keep buying the same thing and they're all interchangeable, they might get a longer life, like when they come out of Hadley. Just checking.
I'm, I'm not aware of that.
So we need to vote on this? Is that what, um, the award for the contract?
Yes, there should be a school committee vote to award the contract to uh, E. Amanti and Sons.
Okay, so um.
I'll make a motion to award the contract to E. Amadi and Sons for the boiler replacement at Clark School.
I'll second.
Second. Great. All in favor, do, please do a roll call. Gargi, I.
Suzanne, I.
Karen, I.
Ted, I.
Great, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martha. Um, all right, so chair, updates. Um, let's think. So I think, because I wasn't at the last school committee mi, uh, meeting, I just wanted to update everyone. I did have a conversation with Dorothy Presser. Apologize if I'm repeating myself already, but I don't think I shared this with you, that um, she did say that um, in regards to the superintendent's um, um, my God, what am I saying? Superintendent's um.
Evaluation.
Thank you, evaluation. And shifted to a two-year and um, that's actually pretty commonplace. Um, so given that Pam has, has um, kind of given us an overview back in January, prior to all this hitting COVID inning, um, we can really look at that as her mid-year, as I think maybe Suzanne had suggested. Um, the, what should happen though, and I know that Pam has already set some dates for the summer, which is important, is that really the committee should relook at those goals and just make sure that they're within the scope of something that can be accomplished realistically, given all of the different things that are going on, right? Um, and one of those things obviously was, is most going to be like a strategic plan, Pam, given that probably going to be very different than what it, what you thought it was going to be. But um, so that would be one of them. But I think um, she just said, making sure that you do, uh, the committee has a workshop to kind of sit down and ensure that they are kind of, uh, they fit with what the year to come is. And um, in terms of, in terms of who the next chair is, whoever does the DESI rating score, um, it's just kind of like a, not applicable because it's a two-year, um, it's a two-year goal. So it's a two-year evaluation, sorry. Um, and I think there was one thing in your contract that said that you complete these yearly, Pam.
Yes.
And I think the committee just has to be okay with amending that when you, when you look at the superintendent's contract anyway this summer, um, it's just important to kind of amend that you are going to not hold her to the year, the yearly evaluation this year. So that does have to, have to be fixed. And I could forward that to whoever, um, whenever you guys decide to have that, we can have that. Maureen has the document to amend. Do you guys have any questions on that?
So, so we, so you're saying we don't have to send anything to the state like we usually do?
Right, there's no rating if it's a two-year.
Oh, do we have to send them something and tell them that we're doing a two-year? Is there like something you send them?
When Chris James does the reporting of all the ratings for the leaders, there must be a selection or a dropdown. This is not applicable. And I'll have, I'll work with Chris James to make sure. And I'll have, I'll work with Chris James to make sure that she communicates that.
And then so we just assume we had the mid-year, we can readjust the goals and then then do it at the end and then do it next May or June.
Gargy, did did Dorothy like include any paperwork with that? On the conversation of, you know, the review, or was that just emails?
Um, I had a phone call with her. I don't, what do you mean? I'm not following.
No, I'm just looking, it's it's different, so I'm just interested in. Reading things, but that's all right.
So Ted, there is something to read, cuz I read about it. That's how I knew you could do two years. Because Gargy, what did I read? Like. What came that I read that I told us?
No, it wasn't. It was from MASC and they talked about what people, what school committees are actually gonna do, because it is really hard. To look at trying to evaluate the superintendent under these conditions and the, some of the guidance was, well, just evaluate the superintendent up until March. And and go from there and and then, you know, but obviously Pam is a tenured superintendent and I think her goals can be multi-year at this point.
No, but I remember reading something about the superintendent evaluation, like when you read about how you do it, it does give you permission to do it. At a two-year cycle.
Yes, yeah.
I was just saying for Ted, there's a document that MASC, like when they talk about how to do the evaluation, that is in that. Whole thing that extends it to two years is in that that document.
All right, thank you.
So try Chair, um, we didn't really have one. We didn't have a try-chair meeting. Um, we had a brief conversation just about um the school committee creating a statement in regards to the budget. And I thank Karen for writing that. Um, I thought it was really well done and articulated our concerns and. While kind of balancing everybody's feelings on the town finance and school committee side, so thank you for doing that. Um, so the next thing we have is our resolutions. We have two resolutions. Um, the first is anti-racism resolution. So did you guys, if you, um, this is kind of has been revised and adopted. I, and we all should be signing it.
Maureen wanted to know if she had permission to use your electronic signatures, and the only one she would need is Karen's, but Karen has to go in and sign.
Warrants. So I'm gonna read.
I know.
So I'm gonna read through it, cuz I think it's important for it to be on record of what we're um resolving. Does that make sense? So whereas as schools have the responsibility to equip students with their civil rights of obtaining a free and appropriate public education. It is the responsibility of each school to ensure we create a welcoming community for all students. And whereas it is the responsibility that every district provide to all district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development. On diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse and culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas every district will examine their policies for institutional and systemic racialized practices and implement change. With sustain- sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas every district will incorporate into their curriculum the history of racial oppression and works by black authors and works from diverse perspectives. And whereas as we we are, we as school district leaders can no longer remain silent to the issues of racism and hate. That continue to plague our public and private institutions. Resolved that the Swam Scott School District and all the school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practice are eradicated. And diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded in practice for our students, families, faculty, and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist. That acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter. So I um, I, that's fine if Maureen can do a signature, Pam. We have to vote or just we're all approving it? How does, does it say vote on here or does it just say good approval? I think it's just a resolution we read, right?
Right. The COVID nineteen state funding says vote requested.
Well, that that was, I was gonna kind of ask, where does this particular, does this go anywhere, this one? Typically, when we do these resolutions, it's that we're sending it, you know, to the state or where that we're asking for something. This one sounds more like we're making a commitment internally. I'm just, or is it, or is it going somewhere as well?
So I thought, I thought it was more like per district internally, you're like making this resolution to adopt. I don't think it's being sent anywhere specifically. I think it should be hung somewhere, for sure. I think it should be kind of displayed um. Somewhere in the district or the offices, cuz I think it's wonderful resolution.
It could be put on your website as well, like on. I think maybe when we get new members, that, you know, they have a chance to.
Yeah. Um, and then the second, does anyone have any thoughts or discussion about what I just read, or is that, do you guys, are you okay with that? To sign it?
Yeah, I'm definitely okay to sign it. I saw some other districts had like, had had um. Added to this by by actually having um some action steps. And whatever, I just don't think we're there yet. I mean, I think it's something we could talk about, but we could also talk about in our school committee goals. You know, we can look at this resolutions and make a commitment to adopting a goal related to this every year or something, you know, I mean, we could.
That's a great idea.
Make it, to make it more real, make it like a a living document or or actually something we're working off of. So we can talk about.
Definitely, you know, I mean, we already kind of talked about the the workforce, but you know, so obviously that needs.
Well, and we, and if we talk about, you know, the district's gonna provide district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development, I mean. To to, you know, how Pam is asking her staff to read something. I mean, we certainly could all read. Um, something together and have have a discussion or have bring someone in to help us discuss it or. Be part of the restorative circle or, I mean, I'm just saying, we can all, as a school committee, we can make our commitment to to try to. Um, accomplish something off this list at least every year, whatever. I mean. I'm 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 great with it. I just want it to make, I don't want it to just sit and collect dust.
Right, wait, it's no good unless there's something to be done, right?
Right.
I think it would be nice if this could be like blown up somewhere and put it somewhere. I think it's a wonderful, it's it's a great statement, so. Um, the second resolution does require a vote. Um, it's the COVID nineteen state funding. Uh, which I. Which um, I I believe at this point, from what I understand, eighty-nine districts have signed this in the Commonwealth, so. This is going to Governor Baker and state to kind of basically, I'm just gonna read it. Swam Scott School District School Committee and Superintendent Resolution COVID nineteen state funding, whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of. The COVID nineteen pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do safely and responsibly. And whereas it is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay. For the enormous additional staffing, transportation, and material expenses required to do this. Whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID nineteen safety guidelines to be followed. Without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore. Let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID nineteen expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID nineteen.
Here, here.
Love it.
Signatures as well?
Yes, please, and then we can then be added to that lovely list of, we'll be number ninety maybe or whatever.
Copies sent to us of the signed ones?
Sure. Trish, can you put that in the notes, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then letter E is orientation for new school committee.
We need a vote on this one?
To adopt this resolution to send to the governor.
For COVID nineteen state funding.
Over nineteen state funding.
Great, all in favor, roll call. Gargy, I.
Suzanne, I.
Karen, I.
Ted, I.
Awesome, motion passes. Um, letter E, orientation for new school uh committee members. So this was, the draft was circulated around, but I know Suzanne um received some feedback on and edit. Um, Suzanne, do you wanna speak about it a little bit?
Um, so I changed it to be the guide because because really it's great for new people, but anyone can look at it, cuz there's lots of information here. So I just called it a guide and then um, there was a couple outstanding questions. And uh, let me see if I can find where um these comments are supposed to go, but. Um, it's fifteen pages long and mostly, and mostly um, everything is is generic. Or there's some things that are that are about our district specifically and things that are, things that need more detail, it says refer to charting the course everywhere, so. This might be, this might be like a tiny bit redundant, you know, cuz you can just look at the charting the course stuff. Um, the school committee operating protocols, I noticed that um. Um, oh no, just, that's this year, so that's fine. So there's a link to our operating protocols. I I took out the entire section that listed them, cuz I figured we can just look at that. Um, tells, it talks about what new members have to do and who like, how, what this. Chair and the superintendent will talk to them and tell them and what they're responsible to learn. And um, all the documents they should be looking at, what the chair, the vice chair, and the members' roles are. Um, kind of subcommittees we have and advisories. Um, oh yeah, is this it? We just have, these are our standing subcommittees right here, policy, budget, and contract. Like, right? I mean, I know we do. But that's not necessarily a standing one.
Suzanne?
Yeah.
Um. When, when I was going through it, and I can't find it right now, but did, did we have something? I talked to Alice McDonald the other day on.
Oh, yeah, we have a li- we have.
For the um, the tech.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And and we also have to put her on the agenda soon because I can't remember the last time it was done, but.
I kind of agree with you.
That's a totally separate conversation, but I don't, I can't remember if it was in there or not.
So, so, so she's a, she's a liaison to our school committee. She's, she's someone appointed by. Us or by the town?
Michael appointed her, yeah, he he appointed.
Swam Scott representative to the Essex Tech School Committee.
So, so I'm not sure she, she, I'm not sure she makes our guide, or where where is she going here?
I don't think she does, but separately, I do think we need to check in with, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna write that down under my notes of things to do. Um, how about, are so, are you guys, are you guys good with those standing committees? That's enough, those three? And then look at the liaisons down below. Are these all the liaisons we have? I mean, are, do we still?
Is it still a thing?
Huh?
Article six still around?
Well, I think it's gonna get disbanded, but it hasn't officially. And then I was thinking also, how about renewable energy? Like, do we still have, do we have a person?
But I think, I mean, I think renewable energy was, you know, now that you have Max, who's gonna be the building um person. You know, he's really gonna be a big part of that group. I remember of the previous. Um, person who was in that role. My god, I'm losing my mind, can't remember his name. Yeah, he like attended quite a bit of those meetings and that was such a strong link for the schools that. I don't think there needs to be one, but that's.
That's why I think that's, that's good, yeah.
Okay, so everything else is like um, professional development, where we can go to get professional development. I speak to how the school committee is trying to um have our, I mean, I would try to have our own goals, our responsibilities. Nothing here, budget, policy-making, public relations, and then um. Are these are, I had a question, are these our four units? This is what they're called, teachers, nurses, professional support, administrators, assistants, and custodians? Like, do we have, do we have names for those?
Yeah, the only one that, teachers, nurses, um, educational support professionals is the ESP.
Okay.
And then administrative assistants and custodians are correct, so it's just that one that gets changed.
I'll change that.
Um, nurses were now part of those teachers, though.
They are, but she's just articulating that the nurses are in the teachers' contacts. I think that's good to have that.
Um, and then I talk about meetings and how the agenda is written and what kind of meetings there are, like regular, special, and executive sessions and the rules. And um, and then, and then this is what the appendix is all, everything else, like the other fifteen pages is all just stuff. So um, the organizational chart, I couldn't find that anywhere in our drive. Like, I remember you did that, Pam, and I don't know if, I just, I don't know where it is in the drive.
I truly had so many versions, I can find it, make sure I get that to you.
Pam, I have it. Budget book.
What? Oh, you just did the budget book?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay.
Well, I can, it's, wait, is it in the budget book that's online?
Yes.
Oh, I'll just extract the page then.
Thank you.
And also, I I don't know, I was sort of, I wanted to link the communication um chain of command thing in here. Saying, refer to that, but where's that?
It's in the district handbook, the student handbook, which is also online.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna, I just wanna link that, cuz I think that's like.
That's important, that's great.
You know, cuz when.
When a school committee gets a call and they don't know what, they try to solve their fixers and know who to direct it to.
Okay.
It's awesome, Suzanne. It's, it is.
Um, how about the first one? I mean, how about um, um, appendix one, sample planning calendar? Like, Gargy, wasn't there a calendar, we said, this is like in January, we do this and March.
There is, there is one.
Where's that?
Um, Gargy and I, Maureen has that.
Yeah, so what happens is Maureen has it and then based on it, I would look at it and Pam and I. Set up a chair agenda prior to every meeting, so we would just add to the agenda.
Okay, so I'm just gonna take that appendix out, like.
I think that's more. I think it's a nice sample of the planning calendar of the school committee, but I don't, I don't know.
You can just put a little caveat, like a little asterisk to say, this is subject to change depending on, you know, subject to. I don't know how we.
So I can just get like a PDF of the document from Maureen?
Yes.
Okay. Because I just think it's like easy to put all this stuff on one page.
Yeah, great.
And then uh, I think this guide, if we approve it, should go on our website. It just can be a, as a resource for us to use. Or if anyone's curious about what the school committee does, like if they're gonna try to get elected, they might wanna ask. Um, or read that, right? And um, sorry. And um, everything else is just like, this is just like what the, what every office does, the business office, human resources, sort of like. Generically what their responsibilities are. And um, these are just terms, I I borrowed this from someone else's handbook with permission. And this is just terms that we use, like what's free cash, what's a foundation budget, just, just.
Oh, that's wonderful, that's great.
Oh, it's awesome.
So um, these are just, this is like a glossary, right? And then at the end here, oh, these are still terms. These are specific school committee terms that we use, like adjournment, appropriations, bill, arbitration, just stuff like that. And then at the end is um, educational acronyms. Just um, because. So.
You're really raising the bar here, Suzanne, my god.
And then finally, here's a checklist of things you should take care of for your new school committee member.
Oh, look at that.
Oh.
And here's some frequently asked questions. Again, these are from someone else's. I just, I made the answers relevant to us, I think.
That's amazing. Thank you for doing that.
Awesome.
Suzanne, this is awesome.
You know how much I like this shit, stuff.
Language, language.
You know, I mean.
Welcome to the club.
I just, you know, I just think it's, I think it's important to, I mean, there's some things here, I mean, I think everyone should read our protocols. When you come on board, you should read them and and we shouldn't wait to hear about them a couple weeks after or whatever. I don't know. So um.
It's not like a vote or anything, it's just a, you know.
I think, I mean, I think uh, this was like one of our goals, is to get this done, and if we do it, we got a goal accomplished.
Yep.
Right? Some of us. And we did this, so.
Great. Um, okay, so the last thing on the Chair thing is the twenty twenty twenty-one uh election of Chair and Vice Chair. Um, I don't, you know, I realize that uh elections are coming up on June thirtieth. Congratulations, Suzanne. That you're in and continuing your journey. Um, and um, congratulations, is it John Giant? Is that his name? Um, and um congratulations, is it John Giant? Is that his name? Yeah. So I I just want to make.
Wait, how do you say? Dantus.
Dantus. Oh, sorry, I apologize, John. Um, so I think, though, you guys should, you know, obviously you're gonna have to vote on this with Amy and your new the committee member, but I just want to be careful because obviously lots are, lots of things are happening over the summer um in terms of like planning and what's happening. So just, you want to make sure you have a chair and a vice chair in place. Um, so I don't know, like, what that looks like, or if you guys want to talk about that at all, or have a clue already about who is planning to run or do that.
Just. I I'm I'm interested in staying on as vice chair. I couldn't, I can't step up because I got, I got some other bigger responsibilities. But um I I appreciate, Gargi, like, your communication and the way we work together was really great. And I'd like to continue that with whoever wants to be the chair again, because I think it worked really well, just me knowing what you what you knew right after you knew it and just being ready to um step in. So I would like to, I would like to bring that model or continue that model with whomever wants to be the chair. And I will support that person in any way. But.
I mean, my my main concern was was what Suzanne wanted, right? Because I would consider, you know, her to be next in line, but I totally understand that she is, you know, too busy or ha- you know, is just has other huge priorities. So um so I would support you staying on as as vice chair and, you know.
So maybe you and.
You're now for another several years, so you may still may still get that uh that turn, but um so, yeah.
But maybe you, Ted and Amy, I don't know, figure it out.
Yeah, okay.
But I guess like if the vice chair is voted or stays in place, then at least you have. I just don't want there to be like any, you know, well, I mean, it doesn't, whatever, you guys figure it out. But I guess you'll have to start a meeting to kind of get that on the books, you know, just because I remember it happening one year and it was like, oh, this is unfortunate that we didn't really plan for it, so.
Our next meeting is July eighth.
Ten days.
Yes.
I would say that Suzanne would run it as vice chair and then we would have to make a decision at that meeting, yeah. Great.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, like, we can't, we're we're not voting tonight anyway. We don't have that on the agenda.
Well, I mean, we could elect, does it say that? What does it say?
I don't know.
No, election of chair and vice chair. So you can elect your vice chair at least so you have it in place. I mean, if we're all in agreement, I mean, I don't know that Amy would mind that at all. I don't think that she would, but whatever you guys think.
Yeah, well, I'm all for doing it just just to just to have it done and in case anything comes up.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
Does somebody other than me want to make that motion?
I I was gonna throw my hat in on the vice chair, um honestly, but to tell you the honest truth, and I hope it's not a uh I hope it's not going to be the way that the next several months are going to be, but between work and everything else, I am uh pretty busy in investigations, so in all honesty, if I could not devote um time there, I would I would not want to be part of that. So I nominate Suzanne as vice chair.
Thanks, Ted.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, roll call.
I, Gargi. Suzanne, I.
Karen, I.
Ted, I.
All right, great. Congratulations. All right, speaking of your other busy roles, school committee, school building committee meeting update, because you.
Yeah, it's gone great. We um we have a community forum on Tuesday, uh June thirtieth at seven o'clock. Uh, another Zoom forum, so look for um invites to that. It's gonna be a project overview. It's sort of going to be a summary of everything that's happened to this stage and exactly where we are and kind of moving forward. We're gonna try to, gonna try to have a brief, brief presentation and lots of dialogue, hopefully. You know, lots of community questions and sort of um listen to concerns and questions and just kind of vet the six options that are currently on the table and on on the three different sites. Because at some point um later this summer, we need to, we need to narrow it down to one. So we s- we need um community feedback and input. So that's where we're at. Oh, we also got um got to read the educational plan that um the superintendent's been working really hard on that came out of the educational visioning workshops that we did. And um it's really exciting. It's a really robust bust document that's really going to guide what what's going to be in the new school and how how it's going to run. So that was great to finally be able to read through that. Anything else, Pam? Am I missing?
No, no. I thought the last um forum was really well done. And I mean, I don't know how it would have been presented any better to talk about the different options and you know, they meant to build one building now versus, you know, multiple buildings down the road. It was just really well, really well done.
Yeah, that presentation was abbreviated. That was, that presentation was about sixty slides and it was made into ten slides for town meeting members, like just just um for for informational purposes, they, so town meeting members got kind of an abbreviated ones and got, I got a lot of good feedback um uh emails from from a lot of different town meeting members, like comments about it and and um interest in it. So that was great. Yeah.
Suzanne, can I just ask, are you, are now that we're, like, I I know you're having all those, you're having a lot of community forums and meetings, but um one of the things, the goals of the school committee was to kind of do those like, you know, reaching out to the community, like an hour check-in chat. I know that COVID has affected a lot of that. But i- is it your sense that maybe even the committee members going forward for this year should still do that even in a Zoom presence? Just so people can check in with school committee members about it? Because I remember hearing some talk about, obviously, people not wanting to spend the money on the school. And you do such a beautiful job explaining it. I mean, this is like you're breathing and living it. Um, I watched you during your debate, obviously, um your question thing for the line item. And I just feel like you just speak so well. Um, and I don't think, I just think that, you know, chiming into the bigger community forums are important and being a part of it. But I thi- I do think people appreciate the time to be able to have their own questions specifically answered. And I I just didn't know if that was something you guys might want to look at this coming year, if that's even, if you had the bandwidth either, but.
You you mean for the school committee to do it or the school building committee?
Because. The school committee, to be honest, like, I think as the proponent of it, I think it's good to, how how are we balancing our other pieces? I I don't know. It was just an idea.
So we had, so we had a discussion at this, our meeting last night, actually, about about communication and about how we can get uh a more diverse group of people to our meetings and larger groups of people in forums. And a lot of, we just talked a lot about, you know, having smaller meetings that were like precinct, precinct driven, because we noticed that precinct one has a Facebook page now and precinct five. So maybe those are people to reach out to and do like, sort of, you know, get people in your precinct, like ask town meeting members, you come and bring five of your friends that aren't town meeting members and let's talk to you all. And so like now we can do it virtually, but maybe hopefully we could do those in person, too, and sort of bring the show on the road a little bit. And I think that's what the goal is going to be from now through the end of the summer is to try to do that outreach. And I think that as a school building committee, we're gonna have to break up into little teams of people to to sort of do that. But but I think as a school building, I think as a school committee member, like someone mentioned, Michael mentioned, he had office hours to train people on Zoom for town meeting. And I was like, this is such a great idea, just to like, I like have virtual office hours for school building questions or something and and just publish them somewhere. I don't even know how to reach people, but, you know, like, I'll be sitting at, I'll be sitting at my Zoom for two hours. You know, call in if you want to ask me something.
You will just pop in or out.
Right? I don't know.
I mean, I think the idea is just a way to reach out more. I mean, you guys are doing a wonderful job, but just just some thoughts on that.
It's really hard because it's, this COVID's making it difficult, you know, something that's already difficult, much harder. Right, Martha? Robert?
Just a little bit, yeah. No, I I put my hand up because the um, in one of my prior districts, um school committee members held, uh, one member held office hours before the regularly scheduled meeting so that if there was a concern from a community member, they they had the availability to speak to someone.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Like.
Those, usually it was, you know, they rotated through who held, who hosted the the um the office hours, but they would show up to the meeting an hour ahead of time and and and, you know, from time to time, check in.
I mean, that would be so easy to do now with Zoom because you're just here. But I mean, I'm I'm game to try anything. It's just so hard. I don't know how to reach, like, I don't know how to reach the people I want to reach, like, the people that are paying attention, pay attention. It's like the other people and I just don't know where they are, like, how to get to them without knocking on doors. Uh, yeah.
It's hard.
All right, um, okay, for, so I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Before you go to consent agenda, we have to say goodbye to you, even though Ted already said goodbye.
Oh, I thought we did that already.
We didn't do it, Gargi. We're so sad.
I was hitting the fast button.
I just want to say thank you. I didn't know you before we started the school committee, which is so unbelievable to me that you and I didn't really know each other. And I feel like I got a very good friend through all this and I really appreciate everything I've learned from you. And it's been so much fun to work with you and I hope I can take some of your calm, collective, like, methodical, logical, all that thinking and all the way you keep track of everything. I hope I can, I hope I can um, I hope I can do some of that without you. And I'm sad to see you go.
Me too. I don't know what we're gonna do without our steel trap.
Quite the compliment, the steel trap. Thank you, Amy.
I I um, yeah, I will also, I will also miss you on the committee. Um, hopefully I won't miss you in real life. Our fr- our daughters are like besties, so. We, we will, other, but um, but definitely I want to thank you. I learned from you and so you will maybe, you definitely.
And and Gargi, we got you something and we would like to, um, at some point, when we get to do stuff in person, we would love to. But in the meantime, we got you this gift. It's, can you see it?
Oh, cool.
It's sitting on your, it's sitting on your deck waiting for you to get home.
Oh, that's so awesome.
It has, it has a little plaque on the bottom with your years of service and a thank you from us.
Oh, my God, you guys, it's amazing. That is so cool.
Look at your backyard. You have a nice little patio starting already. I was gonna send a picture of the chair on that, but then I liked it on your deck better.
Suzanne was the chair of my backyard committee planning.
I should have put my name on the chair.
Just been hanging out there while you're gone.
Oh, that's so amazing. Thank you, guys.
Well, we'll do something in person when we can.
For sure.
When you're home, too, but we're gonna miss you, Gargi.
Oh, I'm gonna miss you guys. It's been uh, it's been quite a journey and we'll see if I can stay away. Because you know me, I'm just, I'm I'm always wanting to get myself involved, so. Uh, but yeah, I'm looking, looking forward to the break, but thank you, guys. It's very sweet. Yeah, we should definitely get together when we can, for sure.
All right, and sitting in your backyard.
Yeah.
reunion in the hot tub.
Yeah. All right, so the consent agenda is designed to expedite the handling and routine and miscellaneous business of the district. The school committee may adopt the entire consent agenda with one motion. At the request of any committee member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. So we have A, regular session meet um minutes dated June tenth, B, budget subcommittee minutes from June seventeenth, and then C, the warrant twenty dash fifty-one. And Karen is uh signing those warrants, I believe, correct? Perfect. Um, okay, so can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Um, is there any discussion?
No.
Sorry, you seconded. I apologize. Who seconded? Karen? Karen, um, any discussion? Okay, um, so uh just, oh my God, I'm like forgetting, what do you do? Roll call? Do we do a roll call and vote? Yes. Roll call, so um, Gargi, I.
Suzanne, I.
Karen, I.
Ted, I.
Okay, uh, that passes. And then can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, roll call.
Gargi, I.
Gargi, I.
Ted, I.
Karen, I.
Oh, if only you had a gavel for one last time.
I know, babe.
Great. Congratulations. Bye, guys. Good luck.
Safe travels.
All right.
I have to um stop recording.
Oh, did you text um Joe?
Um, no, I gotta stop recording and then.
Then let him know, he said, let let him know you're done and then he'll shut everything off.
It has to download to the cloud or whatever it is, hopefully.
Yeah.
I did that right.
That chair is awesome.
It looks good, doesn't it?
Looks so good.